And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's City Council meeting. For those of you attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Kathy, please call the roll, please.
Mayor Thulley.
Here.
Counselor Sealy. Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Counselor Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Trim.
Here.
Counselor Weaver.
Here.
Quorum present.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. I so move.
Second.
Call the roll, please, Kathy.
Mayor Thulley.
Yes.
Counselor Sealy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly. Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Trim.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
And then for the record, just want to note that Mr. John Crowell will be joining us in executive session.
All right, let the record reflect that upon returning from executive session, all members of council are still present. At this time, I offer the following resolution. Whereas the Augsburg City Council is desirous of recruiting a city manager as a top priority in 2024. And whereas John C. Crowell has successfully assisted other communities in a similar capacity and has demonstrated his ability to provide this service to the city of Augsburg in a timely and cost-effective manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council authorizes the mayor, Michael J. Thuley, to enter into set professional services agreement with John C. Crowell. Be it further resolved that $2,000 be allocated to budget line A 1230 dot 515 consultants from 1230, A 123110 salaries to finance this expense. Be it further resolved that funding for this service will come from the fiscal year 2024 budget code A 1230 point 515. I assume.
Second, second.
All right, and just additional information, the $2,000 budget line transfer that's in the motion is to cover the total cost Mr. Crowell is, we've agreed to with Mr. Crowell, which is $12,000. So it was $10,000 in the budget, so we need to move $2,000 to cover the full. Well, I'll also comment that city council appreciates Mr. Crowell's willingness and our request for professional assistance in conducting our search for a city manager. His expertise in this area, most recently in Watertown, his familiarity with Augsburg as a former city manager is of great value to us. Any other discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Thuley.
Yes.
Counselor Sealy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yes.
Counselor Trim.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Approved.
All right, tonight we have two presentations. The first is a budget amendment overview. I'll turn over to interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask comptroller Angela Gray to come up to the podium who will give a brief overview. And just note that the details of this are broken down in the resolution for action later in the agenda.
Good evening, council. In advance of the resolution before you, I just wanted to give you a very high level overview of what we are amending for. It's an extensive budget amendment that you see in front of you to be voted on. The significant dollars that we're amending for are within the police budget. We would be, we accepted the cops grant which allows the addition of two new officers. And we're amending the overall budget for $82,000 to cover the match as well as some other incidental expenses on that, those new hires. The fire department is a comprehensive amendment which recommends the hiring of six new firefighters in 2024. It puts the staffing in line with what the contract has in attempt to be a cost savings measure within the city of Augsburg. The overall citywide budget is also being amended to reflect an anticipated increase in the retirement costs for 2024 based on information that became available from the office of retirement, New York State local retirement system. So that amendment is an increase of $275,000 citywide. The last portion of the amendment is for health insurance. And at the time we were preparing the budget, the health insurance was based on estimate. We had open enrollment close mid to late December. The costs are being reflected throughout the citywide budget to show a savings in health insurance of approximately $490,000. Any questions?
Any questions in council? I would just observe that when you look at the resolution, there's a change and reduction of the appropriated fund balance. In other words, the amount of reserves that will be planned on using to fund the budget in the current year. That is lowered by $364,000. So instead of planning and using $850,000 in reserves, we're going to be using estimated $486,000 in reserves by taking these actions. And the significant reason for that is the the changes to the budget as it refers to the fire department. It shows a reduction in planned expense by making this move of $340,000.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is from the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority.
And to start, I'd like to introduce the chairman of the board of directors, Mr. Vernon Sam Burns. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for inviting the Bridge and Port Authority to give a presentation. I believe this is long overdue. It's been a long time since members of the Bridge and Port Authority have been before the council. As we all know, we've worked together for a lot of years. Again, my name is Sam Burns. I live at 423 Berry Street here in Augsburg. I have a few people with me here tonight. Another board member who resides in the city of Augsburg is here with me tonight, Jennifer Cork Pickman. Jen, thank you for coming. Introduce Steve Lawrence, our executive director. Our chief fiscal officer, Patty Nisco is here. Our director of economic development, Anthony Ademzik is here. Director of operations, James Chase. And our airport manager, Charlie Gerlick. A few facts, just in case you don't know about the Bridge and Port Authority. We are a seven-member board. We are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the New York State Senate with a five-year term unless you're replacing someone. And we are unpaid as board members, all volunteers, which I think is a good thing. A few facts about the Bridge and Port Authority I think you should know. We have five different components that make up the Bridge and Port Authority. The, the bridge, the port, the industrial park, the airport, and the railroad. Those are five sectors that we run at the Bridge and Port Authority. Unfortunately, another fact I believe you should know is due to the border being closed, the Bridge and Port Authority lost $5 million that unfortunately I don't think we'll ever get back. While some of the traffic has come back, we're only at 80% of pre-COVID traffic across the bridge. That is a significant amount of money that I believe hurts us and what our mission is and what we would like to do. Will that ever change? I certainly hope so, but as Patty could tell you, our chief financial officer, she doesn't want to inflate what we hope would happen. We're very conservative in our budgeting and even being at 80%, that's a significant hit we're taking. But some good news, for the next two years, we anticipate spending we anticipate spending between $65 and $70 million at the Bridge and Port Authority through different projects, which is good for the area, not just the city of Augsburg, but all of St. Lawrence County, but certainly here. And since Mr. Lawrence is our executive director, who's there every day, he can provide you with details. So thank you for inviting us. We're glad we're finally here.
Thank you, Sam.
Good evening, council. My name is Steve Lawrence. I'm the executive director of the OBPA. I've been in that position roughly four and a half years. And it's been a real difficult time, as Sam has mentioned. And I'm here today to maybe give you some more detailed facts about the five entities that Sam was talking about there. So let me start with the bridge. Sam said currently traffic is running between 17 and 20% down over 2019. And 2019 is the year we use as kind of normal. And we attribute a lot of this to, first of all, the weak Canadian dollar. The pandemic forced Canadians to discover ways to purchase items locally. When the, when the border was closed, people needed things that they used to get over here. And with that, you don't see the daily trips that we used to see. And another part of that, Canadian tourists are not using the airport due to the lack of a low-cost carrier. As we all know, we had a low-cost carrier called Allegiant back in 2020 when they, then they left us. So we've been working in a lot of ways to try to get a low-cost carrier back. In, along with the bridge, though, in 2020, we completed a bridge deck and floor beam replacement of the US Bridge Approach at a cost of $19.6 million. We're planning a $3 million paving project in the next, this coming year, and another $10 million to repaint portions of the trust section of the US approach. That's kind of a summary of the bridge. Let me go on to the port. As you all know, we're doing an expansion of the port. And with that, we have a project that's worth approximately $25.1 million. That is proceeding with the idea of it to begin in fall of 2025 and completion for fall of 2026. Plans call for modifying 100-foot by a 500-foot section of the federal channel. This isn't a total dredging area. What it is, is we're doing a section that's dredged next to our upcoming port dock expansion. And what it is, is in the future, when they do dredging, this area will already be done next to that, the new work. And we don't want, and we're just trying to think ahead so that you don't have any issues with dredging being right up close to the work that you just did. So when you, when you've read about our merit grant that we, that was $5.1 million just recently, that's what this takes, takes care of. And then also, we have spent this year $1.4 million upgrading specialty material handling equipment such as a loader and a railcar loader and some ship-loading conveyors, which will really be good for it because it's specialty. It's awful difficult to find somebody that can supply that kind of equipment for something like our port. For our railroad, currently we're upgrading the grass-ribbon, racket-ribbon rail bridges to increase both bridges' weight capacity to allow for more and heavier kinds of rail shipments to the port. In Commerce Park, you probably are aware that we've started for three or four years, three years ago, we started on our childcare initiative. And with that, we've secured $4 million of the $4.6 million cost. So currently, we're in the process of evaluating and selecting an engineering design firm, and we expect to select one in February of 2024. Planned capital improvements at the park include both general infrastructure replacement and energy efficiency improvements intended to help meet the state's target of 40% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. I left the airport for last because that's one of the main reasons we're here. Currently, we're underway with a $21.1 million terminal building renovation and expansion project. It's broken down into two bid packages. Bid package number one is beginning this week. With that, the work includes new security fencing, relocation of an equipment storage building, utility infrastructure work. Bid package two will be bid in February, and that's the main part of the project and the main building with completion set for spring of 2025. Also coming up, we anticipate shifting the federal airline subsidy from alternative EAS back to essential EAS. The difference being that the federal government would, will fund, would fund both projects, but with EAS, the federal government is in charge of paying the carrier themselves. Whereas for the last two years, we've been, that's, that's up to us with federal help. That EAS expires in fall of 2024. So we will be needing the council as well as the Augsburg's community input with the selection of a new carrier for EAS. So we'll be coming to you looking for your feedback and your support when we do that. So that I expect to happen in maybe mid-spring, so to give you a heads up of that. And then we have reached out to a number of low-cost carriers to gauge their interest in providing leisure flights from Augsburg to southern USA airports. And at this time, too, I would like to thank the city for their help with, we have a triennial emergency response exercise, and we had that in September. And both, all of the Augsburg Fire Department and the Police Department were all part of that, and it was very professional and very helpful there. And another side note, when we had the helicopter crash out at the airport, I was on the site within 45 minutes. And I was really impressed with all the Augsburg people that were the, between the rescue squad and the fire department, and then at the gate, a number of pot stand, excuse me, no, there Augsburg Police Departments were there and everything actually, to me, went better than even a exercise one. So we don't like to see those kind of things, but when they do happen, it's good to know that we have that kind of backing. So really, we're here today, and we want to thank you for the opportunity to introduce a vital project poised to redefine the Augsburg city aviation landscape. The proposed plans for the Augsburg Airport Terminal represent a significant opportunity to elevate our city's infrastructure, enhance travel experiences, and foster economic development. In addition, this project encapsulate, encapsulates a concerted effort to modernize, optimize our facilities aiming to meet the evolving needs of our community and visitors. We appreciate your attention and collaboration in advance of this crucial initiative. At this time, I'd like to turn over the remainder of our presentation to the McFarland Johnson team behind the plans we are presenting this evening. Their efforts have brought forth a project design aimed at meeting the needs of our community and the region. And with that, I'd like to introduce Jeff Wood of the McFarland Johnson team. Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to inform me a little bit about the project. My name is Jeff Wood. I'm the vice president with McFarland Johnson. We're the engineer consultant for the airport. And I just wanted to spend a quick minute giving you some background on the funding program that is allowing the project to go forward. It's the Upstate Airport Economic Development and Revitalization Competition. Basically, back in the 2010s timeframe, the state decided that upstate airports needed some significant investment. They'd fallen behind what was happening in the industry. And so in 2016, they made $200 million available to upstate New York airports. And they said, send us your proposals, and we're going to, we're going to divvy up the money. They make one mistake, it was a very competitive program. And those projects, if you look at what they did, were very transformational. It was so successful that the state decided to do it again in 2021. And they awarded $230 million to nine airports, one of them being Augsburg. And that's really why we're here today. Again, they were looking for transformational projects. And I really believe that the, the reason Augsburg got selected is because the project is very unique, because it takes an underutilized asset in the terminal and expands the uses of what the terminal can be used for. It creates a community space. It makes it a real asset, I think, for the North Country. It solves a couple of the, it provides an event space. And the project manager will, will share more about that. But the, the catch was, and this program in both rounds was, you had to agree to a very strict schedule. As they were going through the grant application review process, we had a meeting with New York State D O T, and they said, you must get this done in two years. If you can't get this done in two years, and that's a blank sheet of paper for ribbon cutting, then you're not going to get the grant. And, you know, of course, all the spots just said, yeah, we can do that. And it's hard, but it was successful before, and it will be successful again. So these projects are the governor's priority. The governor's office keeps very close tabs on, on what's going on. We're reminded that by New York State DOT all the time. And we have a deadline of spring 2025 that we must hit. It's in addition to the grant, and that's what brings us here today. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Jason Chevron, who is our project manager on the project, and I'll walk you through the specifics of the terminal.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Steve. I am Jason Chevron with McFarland Johnson. I'm the project manager for this project. And I am going to walk you through some of the aspects of our project and the information you have in front of you here in the agenda. So if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as Jeff and Steve mentioned, we, we do have a schedule here to beat a deadline of spring of 2025. We began the design portion of this project in September of 2022. And we are actually concluding that here in the next couple of weeks with the second bid package that Steve mentioned earlier, actually going out to bid. It's out to bid now, and we have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow. So the, the first bid package, as mentioned, is enabling, we're clearing the site for our terminal expansion. We're going to talk more about some of the utility requirements of that package later on in this presentation. That is under construction currently. Our second bid package, as mentioned, will bid early February, and then that'll go through the spring of 2025, with substantial completion being around the March timeframe of 2025. So a number of features in the project that we're going to be building with, with the airport and all of you, really, we, we aim to address a number of issues on the project. So the airport was undersized for even the low-cost carrier that was at the airport. The ticketing area was very congested. The holdroom couldn't accommodate all the passengers. The bag claim couldn't handle all the people coming off the aircraft collecting their luggage. So we need to, of course, address all of those issues. So we'll be expanding the check-in and ticketing, expanding the passenger holdroom, and also creating what we're calling a great room, which will have a dual purpose, dual multifunction space that it can be used for any event or for airport operations simultaneously or in totality as the event. The project includes high-efficiency HVAC. It includes solar power for approximately one-third of the energy demand. There will be provisions for EV charging out in the parking area, connections to public water and sewer, one of the primary reasons we're, we're here today, complete facility Wi-Fi coverage for staff as well as customers, enhanced electronic video information display systems. So that's your flight information, advertising, messaging, so on and so forth. And then many security enhancements, so perimeter security enhancements, internal enhancements, cameras, security doors, things of that nature. And then Steve mentioned the overall budget of around $24 million, including a tiny. So this is a look at some of the existing conditions of the airport. On the left-hand side, you'll see the current terminal. This is what was a hangar space that had been previously renovated. And on the right-hand side, you're getting a look at the ticketing area, the back claim area, and the holdroom area. And these are all the areas that we're going to be expanding as well as modifying in the new footprint. Next slide, please. So again, we talked about this concept, the airport need of addressing the peak passenger demand when that, you know, low-cost carrier is there, and also the community need of gathering space and kind of these two things coming together really to drive how we designed this project. So, you know, merging those two needs into one. And the next slide, please. And so here's our proposed plan, and I'll start kind of left, left to right. So on the right-hand side, you can picture that as the existing building footprint. On the left-hand side is, is our new building footprint. And so I'll start with the great room. This is the multifunction space that I mentioned previously. You can see there's kind of a line through, let's say, the first third of it that separates, you know, the left half from the right half. And then that can be physically separated, and you'll see what that looks like. And the, the real driver there is to enable that space to function as an event space, but also as an airport operation space in the event there are both going on at the same time. And then you see the support spaces associated with those. So conference room, restroom, utility spaces, so on and so forth there. And then our great room, you see the bag claim unit up there to the top left that'll, you know, accommodate our incoming baggage as well as airport operations when it's in that scenario. The room, as I mentioned, could also be used in totality for any event or airport operations. The expanded ticket lobby, that's kind of the connection there between our brand-new space and our existing terminal. It's a much larger ticketing lobby, about 30% larger than it was to accommodate the peak demand. And then a reoriented security checkpoint to get all of that to accommodate the peak demand. And finally, on the right-hand side, an expanded departure lounge. So that's our, our picture and plan there. We'll, we'll see what that looks like, some run-throughs coming up here on the next slide, please. So digging into the, a great room a little bit more, you can, you can see how this is laid out. We've got this expanded plaza space out front. So picture the plaza spaces when you're approaching the airport to either depart a flight or attend an event. It's an open space. It has, you know, landscape treatments. So it's a comfortable space for people to dwell either before a flight or during an event. And that's kind of going through the plaza straight into the great room, and then off to the right, the expanded. So flexibility in the great room. Again, I mentioned this is a multi-use space, and you can see some of the, you know, the thoughts that are, went into and around the size of the space, the type of event it can accommodate. There's a large, there's a large bit. You can see any number of tables there with a dance floor. If you had that type of event, it could accommodate it. Medium-sized event, where you see the bottom and top half kind of separated with a partition there, show more of an assembly in the left half while airport operations in the right half. An emergency space. So I think this was something that was on everybody's minds during, during COVID, and certainly any project done during that time. We always thought to be able to accommodate a future event that would happen with, with them. You know, similar requirements to be able to, let's say, test passengers as they were coming off of flights, or even a place for the community to go to and, and serve that type of function during those type of irregular operations, let's call them. Then a hybrid event, maybe a conference or even some type of industry show that could be going on in this space. Next slide, please. So this is a, a kind of bird's eye view or, or quasi-bird's eye view of what the expansion tying into the existing footprint looks like. So you see that existing terminal over on the right-hand side now with the OGS super graphic on it tying into this new double-height space in the great room with that plaza and ticketing area in between. Next slide, please. So this is a look at our entry plaza. As you can see, very inviting landscapes and kind of intuitive design in the, the hardscaping to draw you into the great room from the curb side. Next slide, please. Going into the great room itself, I don't, I remember the exact term. We came up with the architect with kind of a modern rusted where we have laminated timber roofing with the exposed steel structure in between. And you've got that center truss, which is where the partition would be deployed in the event of a separate function in the two spaces. You've got the clear story all the way around, letting in a ton of natural light. You know, different times of the year, different times of the day. And then you're kind of looking at where our expanded ticketing area would be from this point out to the field, off in the distance there. Next slide, please. So one of the features of the great room, which is a, you know, a really nice feature for, for the space for the airport in general, is the opportunity for a cafe type of tenants. So this is part So this is part of the project. And this can be used in a number of different places. This can be used during regular operations. It can be used during an event. It could be closed during an event. And you see this big space kind of opening up to the plaza. So one of the features of the great room is a full-height operable partition to open up not only to the outside, but to be able to accommodate any number of events that would require bringing in large equipment or vehicles into this space. So that's where we see this cafe area bleeding out into the customer plaza there. Next slide, please. This is a view towards the great room from our expanded ticketing area. On the back wall there of the back lane, you can see the proposed super graphic kind of the San Lawrence River along that back portion of the wall where our clean device would be. So a good sense of place that you'll be able to gain there for those type of treatments. Next slide, please. And our expanded departures lounge. So this is, you know, existing departures lounge that we're expanding. It's in really good shape. We think the, you know, overall look and feel of it blends well with the proposed look and feel of the great room there with the kind of wood look and feel of cloud ceiling. And that'll be expanded. Next slide, please. And then finally, as an arriving passenger, you know, really welcoming opportunity there for, you know, people coming home to Augsburg or visiting Augsburg, enhanced safety elements because of the ground boarding and deep boarding operations. So when you come in, be able to get right to a canopy. There is bad weather. Again, there's landscaping there. It's going to be well-lit, pavement treatments for enhanced customer safety. It's just a very welcoming experience there for customers coming in. Next slide, please. And so at this point, I'm going to ask Adam Fraschino to come and talk about the utility connections in our enabling portion of the project.
Good evening. Adam Fraschino, project manager at McFarland Johnson. And my responsibility on this project is all the site civil design outside the buildings. But tonight, I'll specifically go over some of the utility connections that we're going to need to record in the city. So on this first slide is an isometric view to give you an idea of where we're talking. The green line is the sanitary sewer connection. The green circle that's closest to the building represents a new pump station that would then have a force main that would go over to the other green circle, which is an existing manhole there currently already in place. The blue line represents the water main that would be installed going off to the north as well. It does go off the page, and I'll go to the next slide to give you a more planned view perspective. So the proposed approach for the water main is to have it bore under Route 37 through a New York State DOT highway work permit. We are in coordination with that highway work permit. It would then extend down towards the airport. It'd all be installed as part of this project with the intent that the area highlighted in red would be transferred over to become city-owned water main. The area in red represents the line from the connection to the existing city water main up to a T that would be installed with a valve. And then, at that point, the remaining water main would continue on to provide a service specifically for the terminal. And then that would allow the yellow highlighted portion of the water line to be, continue to be OBPA-owned and maintained. This would be an eight-inch line. And then you can see graphically as well the three-inch force main that's proposed as part of the sewer line as well in this plan. Next slide, In order to do that, OBPA is proposing that a water district be established. And that's where the city council and the city comes into play. Just a suggestion is all the area highlighted there on this slide in red is OBPA-owned. Some configuration of those parcels could be added as the water district, or all of them, as the new water district. The request at this time is that OBPA be the sole owners within that water district to allow the process to go through smoother. And then as other potential parcel owners around it would want to be added to that district, it could be, could take place at a later date. So that's what's being requested of the city at this time would be the sanitary and water connections that, as was highlighted by Jeff, is in critical timeframes because of meeting that two-year schedule is quick in all aspects of the project, including obviously utilities.
I think that's exactly, exactly why we just revamped our first wastewater treatment facility, to expand and hopefully create more water sewer district, things like that. Give some relief to the taxpayers. And it's nice to see beyond concept. I can remember when Jen and I were on council before, and we voted to move forward. And now we've at least got it on paper, and we can actually see the fruits of it coming to fruition here. So it's nice.
And then I think the next slide is just the next slide. Yeah, so that's it. So I don't know if anyone had anything to add, but if there's any questions, we're happy to answer any that the board may have to address.
I was, in terms of Jason's rundown of the room and the spaces, I really liked the efficiency, the use of the space, the ability to include diversity of offense and things like that, and make it a community, beginning to make it a community transformation as well. Question, obviously, I think I already know the answer, but the OBPA's been reaching out to airlines for the last few years, trying to increase. A lot of these ideas come from the airlines in terms of what they want for an airport and things like this. And then you, then you create, with what money you have, the ability to diversify to meet their needs. Is that the way this went down?
Yeah. So when we began thinking about what type of project to create, we started with looking at those existing conditions, and obviously how those might affect an airline's view of operating in Augsburg. So the airline's customers, you know, equally OBPA's customer. When you have that type of cramped facility, you know, it stresses everybody. You know, customer feeds back, the airline, you know, may look negatively on the facility. So we wanted to address that first and foremost. In terms of the overall design, you know, with the architectural team and the engineering together, you know, we apply the industry-leading examples for how airports are being constructed today. So, you know, without a specific airline tenant to feed back to us, we're kind of taking that collective experience of, you know, current and previous projects, and what we're hearing and seeing in industry and applying those here. I think you'll see that it is very consistent with current airport terminal construction. Although, this is a very unique project, that it is rare to see an airport project taking on such a community-focused aspect of construction. This project is adding capacity, certainly, to the hold room, to ticketing, to bag claim. But that, you know, multipurpose event space is, it's there for everybody. It's not there just for the airline and their customer. So it is very unique in that sense.
With, excuse me. With that being said, just to follow up on his comment, recognizing, and, you know, obviously, it's not JFK, or, you know, but, and it's a wonderful set of plans here. It really is. And it's great to see the article months ago related to this. But there would be no issues with the FFA, FAA with any security for a community product, community event being held there. I mean, it is an airport, you know, in light of, you know, unfortunate incidents in the past. But, you know, that going forward, no issues with any security for holding, you know, an event, a community-wide event that doesn't include airline purchasing or anything of that nature?
I don't know that I would say that there isn't a concern. There's certainly open enough concern in around any aviation facility through, you know, various security treatments on the project, access-controlled, all doors going out to the airfield being access-controlled, additional CCTV camera coverage. You know, we're mitigating that to the extent practical. And it isn't JFK, but the security measures that are in place are equivalent to that that you would see at JFK. So I would expect, I certainly don't want to speak for Steve or Charlie, however, that when there are non-aviation events happening at the airport, that there would be coordination with the TSA and the like.
I would have a question concerning the departure lounge. I love the idea of the great room and the cafe there. But in my experience, when we travel, we want to get through, get through security, get settled, and then maybe do some work. I see a little space in the right-hand lower corner past the passenger amenities. Is that for future growth, capacity at cafe within that space?
Yeah, that space, exactly. As you pointed out, it's in the bottom right side of the existing terminal facility, is going to be part of the renovations of that space to accommodate future, you know, either vending day one, or even, let's call it, mobile cart type of concession in the future.
That was something I had heard from some of our Canadian travelers, that they wanted to get through security quickly, just in case they had an issue. And then, at some points, they were just surprised that they only had access to a vending machine. So I'm very happy to see that. Thank you.
Anybody ever consider sleeping pods?
I haven't heard of that.
Have you? That's a, that's a, yeah, that's a new thing that's popping up in some of the airports around the country. Little, little places you can lock yourself away safely to sleep if you've got an extended layer. Just throwing that out there.
Any other comment or questions from council? How is Andy's staff, do you want to weigh in at all? There's some initial comments on this?
We have had some meetings with Bridgeport Authority, and we wanted the opportunity to have them come speak directly to council. But we have sent this presentation, as well as the drawings that we've been provided, we've shared them with our engineers, and we're working with them to bring a recommendation to council specifically with regard to the water and sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
So, again, your honor, members of the council, thanks for inviting us. Thanks for listening to us. And like myself, most of you have lived here your whole life, but you don't realize how much Bridgeport Authority has and assets and what we do unless you see it. So at any time, if you'd like to go for a tour of all of our facilities, Mr. Lawrence and staff would be more than happy to accommodate you. So just let us know. Maybe this isn't the best time. It gets kind of cold down at the port. But still, there's a lot going on, even in the wintertime at the port. And as Steve has mentioned, the 500-foot extension of the dock, we're very excited about that. Obviously, more than excited about the airport. So if you're ever interested in a tour, or just talking to Steve about anything that we do, feel free to reach out to us. So thank you for tonight's meeting.
Looking forward to reviving our partnership between the city and
Absolutely. We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, I felt it was important very early on that we have this type of meeting presentation because, you know, I mean, three of us are absolutely new to council. Two are returning after a brief absence. And then, you know, the pillars of information I have on my left and right, you know, for recent history. So, you know, for me, this is especially educational, and I appreciate that. And as I mentioned at our inauguration day, you know, there's a lot of exciting things happening with the Bridgeport Authority that do nothing but enhance the opportunity for Augsburg to grow going down the road. So thank you for your presentation. Look forward to continuing to work with you as this project moves along.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so that brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes. And I just want to note for the benefit of the public that this is an opportunity for you to address council directly, but it's not intended to be a conversation going back and forth. If you raise issues or ask questions to us during the course of your presentation, if we have answers to those, we'll try to provide them later in the meeting. And if we don't have an answer tonight, we'll do the research and try to come back in our next meeting with answers. So with that, does anyone like to come forward to address
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Penny Curfee, and I'm the executive director of the Augsburg Library. I just wanted to say congratulations to the new mayor and the new counselors, and welcome back to Councilors Scamperly and Powers. I had sent an email with a letter attached from my board president that I look forward to discussing with all of you at a future time. It's convenient. And I just wanted to say, if you want a tour of the building, if you haven't seen what we've been doing, please shoot me an email or call me, and I'm willing to set it up. And I wouldn't advise going to the attic in the cold weather, but I will if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny.
William Osmer, 507 Elizabeth Street. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you all for being here, here to talk about resolution number six. Sorry, on your first day, you have to deal with that. So I'm going to try to make this easy. I've spoken with Ms. Smith several times and Mr. Wright. We've come to the conclusion that we feel you should enforce the restrictive covenant in repurchase 17 Main Street. I've always had a lot of respect for the RFP process, and it was probably disingenuine of me to ask you to waive that clause. While my intentions, finding another developer for that property, were genuine, we can't always believe a developer in the future will do the same. So I expect that you will buy that back. I'm asking that, since you're the buyer, you will provide a contract, and you can do that as soon as possible. Whether that be the end of this week or next week, we'll sign it immediately. I would also highly encourage you to begin a new RFP on 17 Main Street as quickly as possible. We do have a developer that's interested in that property, and maybe there's others with that RFP process. We'll draw that out. It's an exciting time. There are several projects. We have several projects ourselves. I know of several other projects. We just heard about the expansion of the airport in the project Mr. Wright is proposing. It's very exciting for the city and the Marina It's time for some bold leadership coming from the council. It's been lacking for several years. It is time for you guys to step up and help the development happen. And I'm asking that you guys make that happen as quickly as possible for the betterment of the city. We continue to try to build a city where our kids will want to remain and that we want to live. And we need help from this council, councils moving forward to make that happen, and not put up roadblocks and barriers in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
First, congratulations to the OBPA and the engineering firm. That was spectacular. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Thule, City Manager Smith, and even City Clerk Mrs. Jock, and Happy New Year. Congratulations on your first City of Augsburg council meeting. My name is Nicholas Wright with NA Creative Construct. I reside in Southern Maine. I am sorry I wasn't able to bring fresh Maine lobster today. That would be considered bribery. Nonetheless, I'm here representing my development of the 18-hole mini-golf attraction in the Marina District. I strongly encourage you to expeditiously resolve all issues around 17 Main Street. I encourage you this evening to vote to take back Part A from RSBC, and immediately put the land of 17 Main back out for an RFP. In regards to Part B, it is my understanding that the city is allowing another developer to buy the land after their RFP was awarded over two years ago, and the land has been off the tax rolls since then. I'm a bit baffled by this, as a developer from Part A has been paying taxes on their part for the same amount of time. I submitted an offer for Part B of $10,000 on December 11, 2023, and have yet to hear an acknowledgement from the city. of $10,000 on December 11, 2023, and have yet to hear an acknowledgement from the city regarding this offer. In regards to my project, to date, I have had little to no official communication from the city since approaching the city in November. In fact, if I was a developer without deep ties into the city and didn't personally know Councilor Scamperley, or had the ability to get Mayor Thule's phone number, I would have little to no information or detail outreach from the city. I hope you find staff soon to help address this issue. While I understand the city is very understaffed, and probably not through any of your own doing, it's been frustrating to think, given the current economic climate in the North Country, that my project shovel-ready and funded, wouldn't be welcomed publicly and promptly with open arms. So tonight, I'm asking you to appoint a champion within City Hall, whether a staff member or counselor, that can help carry this project through the process from today to a successful completion of opening day. This person can act as a liaison between this project and help us navigate the city process efficiently and expeditiously. Additionally, I'm asking you as a council to have the new RFP on Part A commence in tandem with the process of buying the Part A land back from River Street Growing Company. Counselors, I strongly believe in the hope and future of the city of Augsburg and the people within it. I'm trying to put my money where my mouth is. I really truly am. I need your help. I've had many people from around the country reach out to me regarding this project. It's been pretty amazing to see the hope. I need to get this built in 2024. I appreciate, I genuinely appreciate your time. Everybody's time tonight allowed me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anybody else in chambers?
Good evening, Mayor Thule and council members. Tonight, I stand before you to voice voice support for Mr. Wright's proposed project Mystic Springs Adventure Golf. Mr. Wright has an extensive resume that includes design for many different corporations, including Universal Studios, NASCAR, and the family business here in Augsburg, Augsburg Pepsi-Cola Bottlers. As you know, Mr. Wright wishes to return to the area to share his talent, business interests, and resources with this region. I commend Mr. Wright for wanting to do so. We live in an impoverished area that has limited disposable income with high taxes, but offers something no other place in the world does, majestic St. Lawrence River, one of the cleanest waterways in the world. The city of Augsburg needs to start catching in on it. There's only one way to do that, and that's to draw people here by offering a regional entertainment piece such as Mystic Springs Adventure Golf. I know that the focus has always been on jobs, which it should be, but we have to be realist and realize the types of jobs this city needs to thrive. I most likely will never make it this far north. We have lost a significant number of jobs over the course of the last few years with closure of Augsburg Correctional Facility, United Helpers Nursing Home, Aqua Brands, and the downsizing at the local hospital. I think we have lost far more jobs than we have gained or will gain. With that being said, like the rest of towns and villages, we need to draw people to spend their disposable income in the restaurants, shops, and local establishments. In order to do so, we need a drawing card such as Mr. Wright's project. Augsburg desperately needs a regional attraction to draw from other areas and follow suit with what other places situated on the river are doing. Those places I speak of are in close proximity to here, include Prescott and Cornwall to our north in Canada. Both of these areas are fairly small, but looking for a big draw from Ottawa, Montreal, and Toronto. They are tapping the tourism market with regional attractions such as large family entertainment centers, featuring water parks, lodging, and other attractions. Prescott has investors that have proposed to spend over $100 million Canadian dollars on a water park, Aqua World. It's situated right across from United Helpers. You can see the clearing. They did acquire the property for nearly $1 million, but it's stalled since COVID. Shortly thereafter, Cornwall announced plans for Great Wolf Lodge, a resort that would offer family entertainment as well. That project is valued at $350 million Canadian dollars. On the American side, Clinton continues to improve its waterfront and offering more and more shows at Clayton Opera House featuring big names. Waddington hosts its annual concert series every summer, impacts the streets of Waddington with locals and people from around the area. Waddington and Clinton have both hosted major fishing tournaments to draw anglers and spectators into their communities. As you can see, other areas are shifting the focus, perhaps lure people in to spend their disposable income and possibly lay roots in their communities. I think you know where I'm going here, and Augsburg needs a drawing card. I believe Mr. Wright's project is a shot in the arm for Augsburg and will help to revive and stimulate the local economy and allow for visitors that would have otherwise maybe not visited Augsburg for lack of things to do. Hopefully, they will spend their money throughout the city, but first, we need to get them here. We live in an entertainment-driven world. People want to be entertained, and will pay money to do so. I just came back from New York City a couple days ago, and I looked it up to see how my budget stacked up against everyone else's. The average person in New York City spends $316 a day. So there's money out there. You've just got to get it here. I sat through a presentation in committee forum a number of years ago on developing the waterfront the city of Augsburg is situated on. Many ideas were proposed, such as a city beach, indoor water park, condos, amphitheater, and shops along the river. The sentiment was echoed over and over. We are waiting for investors to come. The late Chuck Kelly was in that room, by the way. I believe Andrew was in there. Nick Wright, Nick Wright's brother Scott Wright, that was a number of years ago. Well, to my knowledge, Augsburg has been waiting since the 1970s for investors to show up. Some have come forward with plans, but nothing would come of it. Today, you have an investor on your doorstep that wishes to spend upwards of $600,000 in this community by making a regional traction come to the life in the heart of Augsburg in the Marina District. He's here, he's real, and he has resources. I guess the million-dollar question is, do you scare him off, or do you open the door and let him in? He's not asking for anything but your support and your help to allow him to put a shovel in the ground and build something that would draw the people and families back to Augsburg. I beg you to remove the red tape and work with Mr. Wright to bring something positive to Augsburg in hopes that this triggers further development in Marina District and along the banks of St. Lawrence River in Augsburg. It certainly cannot hurt, but only help the city. I see lots of winning here. A vacant property put on the tax rolls, a regional attraction I'm almost done, and a few jobs that locals could benefit from. Augsburg needs to start winning more than it's losing, and I believe a shift in directions in the thought process to figure out a way to develop the waterfront, to maximize tourism, and offer events that draws crowds of people, such as the Seaway Festival does. As much as we are looking for a micron in our backyard, we have to come to the reality. It's most likely not ever going to happen. However, game changers such as development along the St. Lawrence River, as Mr. Wright is proposing, might be the ticket to Augsburg's future success. Mr. Wright is a man of his word. Let him go forward, and he will do it right. No pun intended. Thank you for your time, and I thank you for advance, in advance for helping Mr. Wright and his endeavor make something beneficial to his hometown, the city of Augsburg.
Thank you for your comments. So before you leave, for the record, would you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Scott Boyer.
Thank you, Scott.
Doug Loffler, 311 Paddock Street, Augsburg. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everybody sitting at this table. It's a tough job up there, and I appreciate everybody that stuck their neck out there and ran for election. It's a breath of fresh air. I've been at quite a few meetings in the last four years, but to walk in through that door tonight and knowing that I'm not going to have to argue with somebody or get yelled at or whatever, it's really a breath of fresh air. And I was in City Hall the other day, and lo and behold, I walked by the mayor's office, and the door was open. Okay? And Mr. Thule was there, so I sat down and had a little chat with him. But I'd like to share with you what I shared with the mayor. I don't know what your status is for Recreation Director or Recreation Department, but this community, in the last four to five years, okay, did not apply for St. Lawrence County Youth Girl Funds, Recreation, or Youth Service Funding. Most recently, the month of December, there was funding available for sport camps through the St. Lawrence County Youth Guard that the city did not apply for. And I know there's a variety of reasons why that happened, but we're missing out, we're missing out on some money that could help our Recreation Department with existing programs or developing new programs. And also today, the governor come out with a $60 million program for New York Swim. I know we have problems with our pool, okay? I don't think we can put that in the back burner. They're looking for ingenuity-type programs, portable pools to be put in different neighborhoods, all right, and also to give kids the opportunity to swim. Also, part of that grant is they will pay for somebody to teach lifesaving skills, okay? And that would be a great program to partner with the school district. The school district right now, and the FIZZ program offers two classes in lifesaving. So I think it would be a great opportunity with the teachers that teach that program, all right, to continue in the summer, to even teach more people how to be lifeguard. So I think it's a great program out there, and let's not put that on the backseat. It's something that we need here. We always said, we're on the St. Lawrence River, and we've got to teach kids how to swim. Great opportunity. So let's not let that fall by the... Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Rothell. I'm not a resident of Augsburg. I live at 9687 State Highway 37 in Augsburg. I've been a longtime businesswoman here in Augsburg. My family owns the lighthouse, which is directly correlated to the Marina District. I have known the Wrights since I was a kid. Nick Wright is a friend of mine, and he asked if I would come and say a few words on his behalf. Just knowing them and knowing the, what the Wrights mean to Augsburg, and knowing that he is a native and he wants to come back here and invest, that is something big, because normally, most everyone that leaves here does not come back, especially to come back as a developer and invest. I just have a few things here. So in our area, there are three, three to four mini golf courses in the area. They are all doing extremely well, extremely well. Messina has one, Black Lake has one, and they all seem to be doing really well. They're different, different levels. And what he's proposing is on the major score level of like the Pirates Cove level, where you have multiple attractions within the features. And just knowing the one in Alex Bay closed, just because, you know, that was kind of like a poor management type of thing on their part. Just some numbers here. We need tourism. Tourism is what we have. We don't have the industry. We have the port. Of course, we have the airport and stuff like that. But the region around Thousand Islands, they're bringing in $39.9 million a year. The average visitor spends per day $181 a day. A family of four is spending $724 a day. So if they're bringing in, they have an annual visitor ship at Bolt Castle of 166,000 people a year. That's what they have. So, I mean, we're only 40 minutes away. Why aren't we attracting other things to come here? I mean, granted, you know, everybody that moves here, I tell them, well, we don't have a lot. You can go an hour, get whatever you want, Ottawa, Watertown. But to have something that would bring people here, I mean, just knowing the events that I do and my sister does during Seaway Festival and all the wine shows and all the other events that we have, the craft shows and stuff, we bring in 1,000 people. That 1,000 people, they're coming here to buy groceries, shop, get the entertainment that we offer. They're eating at the restaurants. So, I mean, everything that we do brings in residual dollars. And if we have one thing, they're going to come back for something else. Or if we did it right, they're going to come back the next year. So with Mr. Wright offering to come here, invest money to bring people back here, or get them to come to Augsburg, I am 100% for it. My family is 100% for it. I know almost everyone in the audience is for it. So if we can get something going here, that would be wonderful. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else in chambers? If anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
The first individual is registered as Walter Bracy, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir. I'm also getting a flag that he's not attentive, sir. He may have... Oh, here he is. Mr. Bracy?
Hello?
I can hear you, sir.
Thank you. I noticed on tonight's agenda that you're proposing to sell the surplus property to someone who sent in an offer. We tried to buy a different property in the past summer, and we were denied. We sent in an offer, and that was denied. Told that the only way that that property would be sold is to send it back to public auction. So I was wondering why the property tonight that didn't sell at auction is being accepted by a private offer for the minimum amount and not being put back up for auction. Thanks.
I do not see any other hands raised.
All right, so that moves us to correspondence. Any correspondence for council tonight?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda, that the claims as enumerated in General Fund Warrant 1-2024 in the amount of $2,190,315.75, and Library Warrant Number 1-2024 in the amount of $0, and Capital Fund Warrant Number 1-2024 in the amount of $1,820,334.56, and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 1-2024 in the amount of $120.98, and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 1-2024 in the amount of $0, as audited, be in the same hereby our order paid by so. Second. Any discussion? Kathy, please call the rule.
Mayor Thule?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
Next, we have several appointments tonight.
I'll move the first appointment, Mayor, to appoint Michael Thule, Councilor R. Storm Sealy, and Councilor Jennifer Stevenson to the Audit Committee, terms to begin January 8, 2024, and end on December 31 of 2025.
Sorry. Any discussion? Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Thule?
Yes.
Approved.
I move to appoint Laura Ashley to a five-year term on the Vacancy Committee, term to begin January 8, 2024, and then December 31, 2028.
Second.
Discussion? Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Thule?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Approved.
Then next, I move to appoint Sarah Farley and Pam Lucky to three-year terms on the Pride and Beautification Committee, terms to begin January 8, 2024, and then December 31, 2026. Second. Discussion? Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Thule?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Appointment number four, we have some minor changes. I move to appoint Marshall Lemay, Thomas Hannan, James Morrison, and Laura Pearson to three-year terms on the Augsburg Land Bank Board of Directors, terms to begin January 8, 2024, and then December 31, 2026. Second. Any discussion?
Now, your honor, I will be abstaining from this vote. I may have a possible conflict.
Thank you.
Just for my record, Tom Hannan, Laura Pearson.
Tom Hannan, James Morrison.
James.
Laura Pearson. Any other discussion? Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Stevenson, abstain. Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Thule?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, the resolution appointing deputy mayor. Whereas the Augsburg City Charter provides that the deputy mayor is to be elected from the city council members at the first council meeting in January of even numbered years, now therefore be resolved that Councilor Dan Scamperley is hereby elected Deputy Mayor of the Augsburg City Council for 2024. of the Augsburg City Council for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. I so move.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll, Kathy.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you all. Our next item of business, we read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to modify the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund budgets.
I'll move that.
Second it. Any discussion? Again, earlier during the presentation, I explained the key highlights to this motion. So with that, Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a professional services agreement for accounting services with Angela Gray CPA and the firm of Gray and Gray and Associates Certified Public Accountants, P.C.
I'll move that. I'll second it. Any discussion? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
Right, and then I'm informed that item number four has been withdrawn from the agenda?
That's correct.
Okay.
By the buyer.
Thank you. Next. Number five is. This is a resolution to establish working rules between the city council and the city attorney. Whereas on June twenty-second, twenty twenty, the city council adopted bill number fifty-seven. And whereas the current city council finds these working rules restricts the ability of the city council to obtain a legal opinion on matters which are presented for its consideration. And whereas the current city council desires to allow the mayor or any counselor to seek a legal opinion on any issue presented for its consideration, now therefore be it resolved that city council rescinds the working rules between the city council and the city attorney previously adopted on June twenty-second, twenty twenty. Second it. Any discussion?
I'm gonna tell you what, what are we needs is gonna be right here. Actually being able to talk to the city attorney, ask a question, get a response, maybe, you know? I can't even begin to tell you how frustrating it was, and I'm sure Counselor Powers will testify in that as well.
No question.
But just for the the public's knowledge, the process which we've talked among ourselves and agreed to, which we are not going to put in the form of a resolution, basically during the course of discussion on any issue, any one of us has a question that might require advice or opinion from the city attorney, that we will ask the city manager to follow up with that request and then return the response to us at the next meeting. Should should the city manager already have knowledge about the answer to that based on the fact that that inquiry may have been made at a different time, then the city manager is welcome to provide that answer without necessarily a counsel to the city attorney? And then in between meetings, if any counselor has any question, particularly on an agenda that we might be dealing with at the next meeting, then they will send an email to the city manager with that question, copy to all city counselors. And again, the follow-up will come back through the attorney, through the manager, back to all counselors. So we're all knowing what the questions are, we're all knowing what the answers are. And that way, we're fully informed, be able to, that issues in a way I think is more appropriate than what we inherited. And should there be a situation, for whatever reason, where the legal opinion we were seeking or advice we seek dealt with the city manager, that that request would come to the mayor, and I would then intervene, ask the question of the attorney, and then get the response back? So I think that fairly states where we're going.
Sure.
Okay? Any other comment? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Approved.
Resolution six is Andrea Smith. We asked her to introduce.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enforce the terms of sale for Seventeen Main Street in accordance with the restrictive covenant. Whereas the city of Augsburg acquired the following parcel in accordance with property tax sale foreclosure proceedings and sold the property following a public hearing to River Street Brewing Company, LLC, on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas said sale was subject to a restrictive covenant that reads, quote, "The buyer shall commence construction of the brewery building within three years of the date of closing. If the buyer has not commenced construction of the brewery building within three years of the date of closing, the buyer shall sell back, shall sell the property back to the city of Augsburg for the ten thousand dollar purchase price," end quote. Whereas the buyer has provided written notification to the city of Augsburg that the brewery project will no longer be constructed at this location, the letter is attached to the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council authorizes the interim city manager to execute any and all necessary documents to effectuate the city's option to buy back the parcel in accordance with the terms of sale, specifically the restrictive covenant at a price of ten thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that funds for this acquisition shall come from the sale of surplus property, budget line A two six six zero.
I'll move that.
Second it. Any discussion? Just for the benefit of the public, I just want to do a bullet point history of how we got to this point. Back in October twenty twenty-one, the city put out a request for proposal on the parcel of Seventeen Main Street. And the city received a response from that RFP. There was a joint submission between River Street Brewery Company and At the Docks LLC. And so in their RFP response, they requested that the parcel of Seventeen Main Street be divided into two sections, east and west. River Street Brewery Company obtaining the west portion of the land for the construction of a brewery and taproom. At the Docks LLC, the east portion for an accessory structure. As noted, the terms of sale included the restrictive covenant that was referred to in the resolution that was requested by the purchaser. And so that is what we were being asked to act on tonight. We are in receipt of the letter from River Street Brewing Company informing us that they are outbuilding or plan to build their brewery and taproom in another location. Referring to the other part of the joint RFP from At the Docks, it is still their intent to build an accessory structure there. I intend to join the interim city manager in a meeting with the representatives from At the Docks in the very near future, in an effort to discuss a timeline by which they would proceed to file the necessary documentation to make the purchase and proceed. So because we're in further discussions about that parcel, we're not in a position to take any action on the offer made by Mr. Wright with regards to the ten thousand dollar offer he made for that parcel at the last meeting. At the same time, once we have knowledge about that potential timeline, then at the next city council meeting, I think it gives us opportunity then to discuss how we want to approach the sale of the property that we are reacquiring tonight. Any other comment? I think I summarized.
Summed it up pretty good. We understand the nature that we want to fulfill time components, do this rather aggressively, something we discussed.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say, but we need some more information, again, with regards to the the east parcel that is still under consideration by At the Docks to determine how we how we go about marketing the west parcel which we are acquiring tonight and how quickly we will do that. Again, with that, you know, just recognizing the timeframe to Mr. Wright's timeframe along with the additional with with Mr. Hosmer moving his his project to another parcel land and and now removing this covenant, taking back this property allows us to be able to to assist with pretty much everybody in their endeavors. Now, that's our goal, and, you know, we'll continue to see that through. Right, anything, any other comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, our next item of business, we read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution allowing St. Lawrence County Department of Highways to be held harmless for provided shared services such as paving, signage, road striping, blasting, and other routine maintenance activities to the city of Augsburg.
Like to move that. I'll second it. You should have this down pat by now.
Yes.
Any discussion?
So just in a matter of explaining to everybody, this is a routine procedure every year.
Yeah.
Just in case we hold each other harmless, we hold St. Lawrence County, they hold us harmless in our work together as a partnership on these roads and highways and things like that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Item for action number seven, I will read the resolutions to appoint interim city manager. Whereas a vacancy continuing to exist in the position of city manager, and whereas the city council desires to continue the appointment of interim city manager Andrea Smith, now therefore be it resolved that Andrea Smith is hereby appointed interim city manager effective January ninth, twenty twenty-four, and said appointment shall be effective through July eighth, twenty twenty-four, or until such time as a permanent city manager is appointed. And be it further resolved that a stipend of nine thousand dollars per month above a regular salary shall continue for the full term of the interim city manager. I so move.
Second that.
Any discussion? I extend my appreciation to the council for your willingness to continue to help us out in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my boys. Incredible amount of work. I know you have any plate. We all appreciate it, so.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, next on the agenda is old business. Does anyone have any old business to bring before council? Hearing none, new business. Does anyone have any new business to bring before council?
I do have one item.
Please.
This afternoon, I received notification that the city of Augsburg has been the, is the recipient of a Clean Water State Revolving Fund Award for our reconstruction of the East David Street Project. This is a one point three million dollar grant award through Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is pass-through funding for the bipartisan infrastructure law projects. And this is a application that we submitted earlier this year requesting this amount. Our full our full request was funded. This was, like I said, received just this afternoon, but one of the very first conditions is that the city make a determination on whether or not we would like to accept this funding on or before January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. And given that our next regular council meeting is not until the twenty-second of January, I wanted to bring this to the attention of council and let you know, it doesn't require a resolution. And essentially, what this would do is simply accept the award, and then we would commence the time period in which we would need to finalize our funding strategy and and then go forward from there. This is just the beginning of a multi-year process, but it's great news that we received the award, so I wanted to bring this to council's attention.
That's the second one.
We have received a WIA award, which we met back in July. We ended up having to have a special meeting to accept that. Usually the acceptance is pretty quick because they want to be able to reallocate funding if a community situation has changed and it is not their intent to accept the award.
Good work. Excellent. Thank you.
So in in light of the timeline the city's facing, would you be looking for a resolution to accept that grant tonight?
We can just, by consensus of council, we can, I can accept the award on behalf of the city, and then we'll start the process. We just have to submit an acceptance by the nineteenth.
All right, so by seeking council consensus, I would make the motion that we accept the Clearwater Award Grant of one point three million dollars.
Second that.
Discussion?
I think it's wonderful.
Andrea, I heard you write that it's fully funded. We have a matching grant or matching obligation.
Our request was fully funded, so, and you may not have received it, so I'm happy to take the opportunity to provide a little bit greater detail. So we received, this project started with the award of a CDBG planning grant in which we received fifty thousand dollars to do the initial engineering study to develop the drawings and determine the need for this reconstruction project. That was one hundred percent funded by, through the CDBG program. That was the basis of several applications for both water and sewer funds. So I'll just take a few minutes, if you'd like, and go through those applications, since they were just submitted this July without the benefit of the full council. In total, the city is seeking one point eight million dollars in funding for the water portion and two point six million dollars for the sewer portion of the street reconstruction project. We have, we have not received the WIA grant for the water portion that was already announced this year, and we have a bipartisan infrastructure grant pending for the water portion as well as the hardship portion of that. So the water portion of the project does not have any allocated funding award to date. The two point six million for sewer project component has received the one point three million dollar award. We have not heard on the hardship. We have also received a six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar WIA grant, and we have two pending applications for the WQIP. So those are outstanding and have not yet been awarded. Ultimately, we do anticipate that the city will have a cost share, and the total project is between four point five and five million dollars.
That's what I was trying to determine, what our total cost share.
Good start. Great start. So you sent out a memo to the previous council and myself explaining all this.
I did, and I did it again today, but it wasn't until later this afternoon.
We need to get a little later. I was just gonna ask you to resend.
Yep, this is, this is it.
Okay, thank you.
Now you got to call the roll.
This wonderful news, and I've lost track, Kathy, did we go into that resolution?
It was my understanding there was a consensus of council. I'm happy to take a roll call if you'd like, but they just did a motion in a second, so I think. Sure. Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Approved.
Despite my learning curve and protocol and procedures here. Any other new business brought by Council? Items for discussion, anything that Council would like to bring up?
I just want to say, one of the things that I've pushed for is we can try to hold our executive sessions at the end of the meetings whenever possible. If it's a region that has to be held at the beginning of the meeting, we maybe notify the public that we anticipate the action portion of the meeting starting twenty, thirty minutes late, whatever.
Yes, it's something we discuss in planning, and so we'll make that effort. I mean, there are times when there might be an action item presented to us on the agenda that we haven't had a chance to discuss, and it might merit, you know, but we'll try to as best we can, working with the staff, to have executive sessions at the later happen. Thank you. Okay, anybody else items for discussion? I have a list. First of all, for transparency and to keep the public informed, that's an important goal for this Council. As Councilwoman Stevenson noted in her comments following her inauguration on December thirty and on several occasions during the last campaign. In the spirit of transparency, I informed you the public that I met with interim City Manager Andrea Smith on December eighteen to gather information, ask questions about issues the city is or might be facing. And from my point of view, it was particularly good, informative meeting. The next night, this new City Council gathered at my home to have a planning session. Since five of the seven of us were not yet in office, we could not conduct city business. But I thought it important to take the time to discuss city issues of importance to each of us so we could evaluate and prioritize these issues. From my perspective, that was not a productive meeting. We were trying to determine the issues that we're facing, what might have greater priority than another. We have invited, and the City Attorney has accepted invitation to attend the January twenty-two meeting to join us in executive session to give us an update on legal claims and issues which the city is involved with. I believe some of our legal affairs are overseen by other law firms, but if so, perhaps they can give us a report remotely that night. It is important to us to see a return of the timely presentation of city financial audits to the City Council. The city awaits the publication of the December thirty-one, twenty-two audit. I understand that it'll be presented to the Audit Committee very soon. As far as the December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three audit is concerned, it is our expectation that this audit is presented to the City Council before July first as the final two thousand and twenty-three numbers will in part be important in making financial decisions the second half of two thousand and twenty-four as well as in the two thousand and twenty-five budget development. So we ask City Administration to share this information with our auditors. We look forward to work sessions led by City Administration where the City Council will visit city facilities and meet with department heads so we can learn more about city business. And we look forward to presentation at future council meetings from various entities associated with the city as well as presentations from our various boards and commissions so we can learn more about their respective roles in city affairs. And then I suggest this spring, we begin the process of forming a City Charter Commission to review the city charter. The last City Charter Commission met in two thousand and seventeen. They recommended a review by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. The prior City Council pushed that out to two thousand and twenty-seven, but I think we should honor the commitment approved by City Council in two thousand and seventeen. More on that in a future meeting. As far as the request made to us tonight by the Augsburg Public Library, I'm suggesting we refer this letter to city staff for their evaluation and comment and share such with City Council at our January twenty-two meeting. And then finally, many of us were able to attend today. The swearing-in of Jacob Awan was a patrolman in the Augsburg Police Department. I'm told police work is in his blood as Jacob's grandfather, Wayne Ashley, was here and pinned the badge on Jacob after he was sworn in. It was a very, very wonderful moment, very touching moment. So we congratulate and welcome Jacob to the Augsburg Police Department. Anything else for discussion?
I guess I just would have one item, Your Honor. I really did like that we had notification about the swearing-in of Officer Awan. So I'm hoping that we can continue to appear for all of our city employees that have to be sworn in, and it was really a nice showing of support. So I thank you all for that, that notified us.
Anyone else? All right, so now we are at citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address Council, please come down to the podium, and you will have two minutes.
Wendy Hamilton, nine-two-seven Morris Street. I'll add my congratulations to you all, and it's wonderful to see your faces and to hear not only what you expect the transparency to be from City Council to the city, but to see you do it. You took, it took only thirty seconds to add additional explanation to some of the resolutions or some of the decisions, and I'm sure it cleared it up for everybody. So I appreciate that. I think it's a great start. I'm looking forward to doing what I can to help the city in any way that you might need my help, my energy. And I just want to remind you, particularly you, Scamp, the microphone is your friend. When you sit back, people who are in the back rows can't hear you or at home, so.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
I'll take note of that.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address City Council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize it on mute, one person at a time, and you will have two minutes.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, so we have no need for another executive session, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Very good meeting.